Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock, so time for our August meeting of the City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission. If you would be so good as to read the roll, Ms., please, ma'am.
Mr. Fountain?
Here.
Mr. Jones is absent. Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here. I need a motion to excuse our missing member tonight.
Mr. Chad moved to excuse Mr. Jones.
I second that.
And we'll do that by general consensus. Thank you very much. Agenda. Any additions, corrections, changes, et cetera?
Gentlemen, the third agenda item for the, I believe, the Bridlewood subdivision that is being tabled, they were not ready to proceed tonight. So that, just ask for when that agenda item comes up in the evening, just to please table that.
Okay. So if you're here for Bridlewood, you can go home. Not here for Bridlewood. Okay. Minutes from last month. Gentlemen, any corrections, changes? No complaints? Yeah, we can do that, too.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda.
I second.
And we'll do that by consensus.
Yes.
Okay, now minutes. Any additions, corrections, changes to the minutes?
Done.
Then guess what I want?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the July 2, 2025 Planning Commission meeting minutes?
I second.
And we'll do that by consensus? Thank you very much. Okay, this evening, we have three public hearings. The first two are related to each other, but since they are public hearings, that means y'all get input. We do have a few rules and guidelines, if you would. First of all, when we have the, the applicant will, will give their presentation, then staff will give their report, and at that point, we'll open the floor to public input. If you would please limit yourself to three minutes, so we aren't here until the wee hours of the morning, that would be most appreciated. I hope we won't have to time you, but we will if we have to. Once everybody has had a chance to speak their piece, we will ask for any written input that our clerk has. That'll be read. At that point, we close the public hearing. We discuss it among ourselves, and we hopefully will come to a conclusion. So with that, read away.
This is case number PUD 25-4, and case number PUD 25-4, specific site plan number one. It's on an application filed by Rockford Homes, 999 Polaris Parkway, Suite 200, Columbus, Ohio, 43240. The application requests approval to rezone 54.2852 acres from R1A1 Family Residential District and A1 Agricultural District to an RPUD residential planned unit development. The applicant requests approval of a specific site plan to allow development of 121 single-family residential homes. The property is located at 816 Grange Hall Road, further described as Book Three, Page 13, Parcels 29 and 30 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I presume we have someone here representing Rockford Homes?
Yes, thank you. Jim Lipnose, Rockford Homes, 999 Polaris Parkway, Columbus, Ohio. Appreciate your time this evening. I want to do just a brief introduction, if you don't mind, of who Rockford Homes is. We're a single-family home, primarily a single-family home developer that does a number of different things. We built single-family homes. We've built some multifamily homes. We do general contracting. We do land development. But we are primarily a single-family home developer. As you see on the screen, we've been in business for 40 years. This is our 40th year anniversary. We are a family-owned business, third generation. Bob Yocum is the current president and CEO. He is the third Bob Yocum to run the company. So we have a lot of consistency and a lot of history behind us. I am the director of land, and I'll be doing the presentation and your point of contact for this. As I mentioned, we are a multifaceted land developer and home builder that does multifamily, single-family, land and development, and we are expanding out of Columbus into the Dayton market. And we're pleased to be working with the City of Beaver Creek. This is what we're proposing. This is about 54, 55 acres on Grange Hall Road. It's property that we've been discussing with the city for quite some time. You may be aware of the existing stormwater project on the site that handled some stormwater issues in the adjacent communities. We are proposing 121 homes, home sites, on the 55 acres. That equates to about 2.6, 2.23 units per acre as far as density. It's approximately a little over 11 acres of open space on it. At the request of the city, we have a varying degree of lot sizes. Does this have a little laser on it? Yeah. Oh, okay. I'll explain it verbally. As we are but any adjacent existing subdivisions, primarily, yep, that area along the north, and on the east side, we have larger lots that are equal in size to the existing lots on the other side of the property line. Then within the subdivision, in the heart of it, we reduce to some 60-foot wide lots. We are proposing five-foot side yard setbacks with a minimum of 15 feet between actual structures. The northern section, again, on the northern part of the ponds, in addition to the larger lots that we are required to do, we increase the size of the rest of those up to 80-foot to accommodate some of our larger kind of estate homes. Our average sales price is projected to start at about $550,000, and fully optioned out, closing price is probably, on average, about $650,000. It's 121 home sites. We plan on starting Phase One as quickly as possible, and then we've made an agreement with the, when we met with the city and the fire department, engineering, to revise our phasing, so by the time we hit Phase Two, we are going to make that through connection to the east, to Southbrook Drive. I believe that's the name of it, Southbrook Drive. So we'll make that connection in Phase Two. And then that will probably be slated for late 2026, and then Phases Three and Four to follow as the market dictates. So we do anticipate moving through this development rather quickly, with the sales rate of maybe about 32 to 36 per year. So we would be here for approximately four years. Again, happy to answer any questions and respond to any comments that the public may have.
Thank you. Staff's turn.
I forgot to run through a couple more slides, but they're just pretty pictures of some of the elevations.
I've got some elevations. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. As the clerk alluded to, this is a, this is two cases. She read the legal description for both cases. It's a rezoning and a specific site plan. We're going to do it in one combined presentation, but then there'll be two public hearings and two votes at the end. So this is the rezoning and the specific site plan for Wrightwood Springs, PUD 25-4. As the applicant stated, they're looking to rezone about 54.3 acres from partially A1, partially R1A to a new RPUD, and approval of a site plan for the 121 homes on the site. This is the overall PUD process. Normally, if we do it in separate phases, we'd just be on the top row, but because we're doing it concurrently, we're running both Phase One and Phase Two at the same time. And so both the Planning Commission meetings are taking place this evening. Just to orient us on location, the property's located on the west, well, west of 35 and east of 675, about 1,400 feet north of the intersection of Shaker Town Road and Grange Hall Road. The proposed boundaries include about 640 feet of frontage on Grange Hall Road. It's about 2,350 feet deep, and at its widest, it's about 1,280 feet wide. This is just kind of a closer aerial of the site as it is. This was taken actually this year. So you can see there are two ponds that were constructed as part of the city's Spring House, or I'm sorry, the Willowcrest Stormwater Project. Spring House Park is the park that's on the other side of the street, but as part of the Willowcrest Stormwater Project, they constructed these two ponds, and you can't see it on this aerial, but there's another pond on the other side in Spring House Park that all connects as a system. For the rezoning, we generally look at the land use plan and what it states when it comes to recommending rezonings. This area is confined within a low-density residential designation on the land use plan, and what that basically states is you can have residential up to three dwelling units an acre, is what they'll look at. It's also within vacant planned area 64, which has some specific language about having some concentrated growth in the center and then having connections to the adjoining neighborhoods. So what they're proposing, the rezoning portion, is compatible with the land use plan. In terms of zoning, you could see the PUD, it's got the front half is zoned A1 and the back half is zoned R1A. They have R1A to the north and an RPUD to the east and to the southeast. And as the applicant alluded to, the, any of the parcels that are along the R1A parcels will be 20,000 square feet, and then any of the residential parcels that are but the RPUD to the east will be 18,000 square feet to match the 18,000 square foot requirement that RPUD 96.7 Autumn Springs has. Overall, the proposed change is to go to an RPUD and allow single-family residential. All the permitted uses within R1A districts will be allowed, so single-family houses, places of religious assembly, assisted living, and nursery daycares, those are all allowed in the front half, or the back half of the property as it is. But we're just continuing that and stating this PUD is for single-family residential, but does offer the other minor uses that could be in a single-family neighborhood. In the proposed resolution for the rezoning, there is a maximum density established at 2.3 dwelling units an acre, and as you'll see on their site plan, they're below that at 2.23 dwelling units an acre. Again, the land use plan allows up to three, so they're well below what the land use plan states. Now seen here is the site plan, and the numbers, and the thicker black lines represent phase lines. So Phase One would be the westernmost portion of the site, and then as you move down Road B, you could see Phase Two is to the north and to the east, and then Phase Three is the center-south, and then Phase Four is the far southeastern corner. And this is kind of a colorized version. You can see where the single-family homes are. Their lots are highlighted in yellow, and then you've got the right-of-ways highlighted in gray, and then the green areas are the communal area, the common space, and the ponds are in blue. This is, I just wanted to kind of zoom in. This is a typical road. You could see that there's four-foot sidewalks on both sections, and then in between the sidewalk and the curb, there'd be a, we used to call them tree lawns, but we don't allow trees in there anymore because they tear up the sidewalks. So now it's the, I guess, the road lawn, green space, vacant area between the sidewalk and the street, and then, of course, behind that, then you've got the single-family lots. Again, this is just another colorized version of the phasing plan that's happening. Included in your packet, in a proposed condition, we are showing grading limits, 25-foot grading limit on the north, all along the north property line, and the eastern property line, and a portion of the southern property line. But then when you, and actually, the orange should say 20-foot grading limit, not 25 on this, but when you get to that southwest corner, the grading gets really, really steep, so they needed some space to be able to make the area usable. So we're proposing a 20-foot grading limit on that area. And when you look at the aerial photo, you can see that within those areas is a lot of existing old-growth trees. There's some areas that are not, but a majority of it is old-growth trees that would be, remain in place to help separate this neighborhood with the existing neighborhoods. Back to where it was. There was a traffic study included in your packet, and I believe at the end of the staff report, I included a overview memo that the city engineer did, and the traffic study came to the conclusion that there'd be no significant impacts on the intersections and no change in service levels for the intersections in the near area. And their only recommendation was one of the, was a, I believe it was a left-turn lane into the site. But the applicant is showing actually both a left-turn lane in and a right-turn lane in, D cell lane, so that you'll have continuous flow of traffic, be able to go past the site for any, when anyone tries to go into this neighborhood and keep the flow of traffic moving along Grange Hall Road. I believe the applicant showed this, but it's more of just a colorized version showing the landscaping. There's a requirement that each individual lot shall have at least one two-and-a-half-inch caliber tree planted, and that's kind of what this shows. I know that density is always a concern and always a hot topic, and it just, there's a very simple definition in Arizona-Cota. How we calculate density is the number of dwelling units per acre of land. This project being 54.285 acres with 121 units has an overall density of 2.23. If they wanted to go to the full build-out and were able to make it work, the maximum number of units that could be on this site and still fit within the three dwelling units an acre would be 162, so they're more than, they're 41 short of the max possible units that could be allowed based on the land use plan. Here are a few examples of the architectural elevations. They're showing both two-story houses and single-story houses, and that, those will be spread out throughout the development. We've got a full list of the proposed architectures in the packet and a condition that if they, and we see this a lot on developments, is a new model will come in, and so there's a condition that needs to be, if they have a new model, it'll be architecturally consistent, compatible with the existing, and it gives the option, if we can't agree between the developer and staff that it's consistent, we can bring it back to Planning Commission to have them make the ruling on that. Just a few conditions that found in your resolution. One, hours of construction for this site, and that includes any outdoor activity, whether it be grading, earthwork, framing, construction, anything on the exterior shall be limited to Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Once you get a house under roof and if there's plumbers doing stuff on the inside, then that's fine, but in order to make sure that we don't have the external effects to the neighbors, to the north, south, and on all directions, the hours of operation are limited to 7:00 to 7:00, Monday through Saturday. Also, we want to ensure that construction traffic doesn't try to use the existing neighborhoods, so there is a requirement that all construction traffic has to enter the site through an access point on Grange Hall Road. And the condition further states if the city engineer determines that a flagger is warranted, if they're bringing in big machinery or something like that, then the applicant needs to provide that as well. The applicant alluded to a connection to Southbrook. We're always trying to connect, interconnect existing neighborhoods with new neighborhoods. It's a good planning practice, and it promotes, the interconnectivity promotes fewer trips being necessary on the main roads, which see the most traffic. And they're going to be connecting to Southbrook Drive as part of Phase Two, and we have a limit that they can't build more than 10 houses in Phase Two until that road is actually open to the public and able to be used. The minimum square footage for residential, and we based this, looked at single-family store, single-family, or I'm sorry, single-story houses within a mile and two-story houses within a mile, and found the average of that. And so we stated that the minimum square footage of a single-story needs to be at least the minimum single-story within a mile, and that's 1,400 square feet, but that excludes garages and porches. A typical garage is about 530 square feet, so you would be around 1,900 square feet for a single-story, and about 2,300 square feet for a two-story would be the minimums that you could put on the lots within the subdivision. Other plans didn't include an entry sign, and we see that in most neighborhoods, and so we added a boilerplate condition that the final design needs to be reviewed by staff, that it can't be higher than eight feet, and it has to be set off so that there's no line-of-site issues with people coming in and out of the neighborhood. Of course, with any project, any, all projects are subject to our stormwater runoff ordinance, and so we will not, the city engineer will not be given final approval of any construction drawings unless they can show that it meets all the requirements within the stormwater runoff ordinance, which says that you can't have a flow rate off the site any higher than the flow rate that's on the site prior to development. Now, the ponds that were constructed as part of the Willowcrest were designed to account for a single-family neighborhood at up to three dwelling units per acre. So the amount of work that they're going to need is not huge in terms of creating new ponds. They'll have to create some culverts and some pipes to get to the ponds, but the creation of new ponds is minimal for this site, but they are still, they still will be subject to the stormwater runoff ordinance within the city. Now, there are nine conditions in the resolution for the rezoning request, and there are 34 conditions in the resolution for the site plan request. Staff is recommending approval of both the rezoning and the site plan. I'm happy to answer any questions following the public hearings. I just kind of gave a reminder procedurally, public hearing for the zoning, and then a vote on the zoning, and then a public hearing for the site plan, and a vote on the site plan. So again, staff recommends approval of the request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our usual, very comprehensive staff report. Okay, public hearing time. If you would, please, if you, if you would like to speak about the rezoning, come on up and speak your piece within three minutes. If what you want to address is the actual specific site plan, let's wait till we get to the specific site plan. All we're looking at now is rezoning the parcel which is partly A1 agricultural and partly R1A. And you're going to correct me.
No, 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 I'm not correcting, I'm adding on.
Okay, thank you.
Rezoning deals with allowable density, setbacks, and uses. That's what the rezoning deals with.
Right.
And then design, or water, or roads, or anything like that, is site plan. I just wanted to clarify what, which is which.
That's why we have a professional staff. Okay, anyone who wishes to speak about the rezoning, please step forward, state your name and address, and have at it for three minutes. Don't be shy. Always has to be, somebody has to be first.
My name is Brian Wilhelm. I live at 3991 Willowcrest Road. I have been there for the better part of 55-plus years. We enjoy a very quiet, nature kind of setting. Even with the farmland, we still have a great number of wild animals. You know, you guys are really taking away our enjoyment of our property, sitting around, watching these things. I'd also like to know where they're getting their water from. Will they be drilling into our aquifers? Are they going to get city water? Or do they have any responsibility to pay for our schools, which are barging at the seams, that we can't even get the high school funded? You know, I just really think that this is going to be a detriment to our way of living in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
My name's Cindy Fisher. I live at 3646 Southbrook Drive. I'm actually in the Shaker Heights Division of Southbrook, and I'm, I've been there since 1973. My grandparents raised me there, and I live in that home now. You know, I remember just a few years ago, we visited this when, when, I believe it was-
Redwood.
-Redwood Development came through, and we, you know, we had plenty of room then for Redwood, wasn't going to cause a problem, but we, you know, we could, we couldn't, at that time, that property couldn't be used the way that it was supposed to be, which was agriculture, because that money came and that property came from research, from mine valley research, and so it had to be used in a certain way. Oddly enough, last year, we saw ponds going in. Finally, some of the drainage issues that have been caused there for probably 40-plus years that I can remember are now being resolved, but they're being resolved for the wrong reasons. They're being resolved not for those people's benefit, which the city should have done many years ago, but now to bring somebody else in. The people that were working there were very clear of the fact that the money that it took to fix those two ponds came from COVID money, and that money had to be used up. And so therefore, now that the city could use it on that in order to bring a developer in, so, I mean, I kind of feel like I'm here talking, but I feel like this deal's already done. I believe that Beaver Creek was founded on a lot of principles, and I don't believe that we believe in those principles anymore. I've been told here many a times, this is not old Beaver Creek, this is new Beaver Creek, and I kind of need to get over it, but I'm not going to. We moved here because of the community and because of the down-to-earth it was, and that's not what Beaver Creek is anymore. You know, I see the building going on everywhere, and I just don't know that we need more building. And I, and I find it very hard to believe that any traffic study can tell me that if I, just a few years ago, when Redwood was going in, we were told that, you know, the average household goes in and out five times a day, but that those people wouldn't because they were going to be 55 and up. We're talking about family homes here, soccer practice, kids going to school, various things, in and out for parents and adults going to work. So you can't tell me that out of 100 people, let's just say there's 100 homes, and five times a day, average, that 500 trips up and down Grange Hall, up and down Southbrook, Autumn Springs, and through the park, that that's not going to tax that area. It is absolutely going to be a problem. So I think that it needs to stay the way that it is. If somebody can come in and fit it in within their agriculture and their residential, that's fine. We've made, we've made plenty of concessions for that assisted living to be there. I think that the building has to stop at some point. We're going to be Centerville, we're going to be Oakwood, we're going to be Landlocked. There's going to be nothing left. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's-
My name is Steve Fisher. I live at 3646 Southbrook Drive. This is my wife just speaking. We remodeled the house and moved in '09, but she's raised since '73 there. You talk about traffic studies, go out there, North Fairfield and Shaker Town during busy time, and everybody's going to the neighborhood, and then tell me they did a traffic study there. Grange Hall, you're going to be doing down there, that development, you're putting a new park in. And Brian Jarrett sat in here one time and said, "Nobody cuts neighborhoods." I said, "Brian, that's funny. I cut by your house every time, going to North Fairfield to go to work." I have a question. Does the city own the property now? Or is it, who owns that property development wants to go on? Because when Redwood wanted to go in-
The city owns it, the city owns it now, correct?
So was it gifted to the city? Because when Redwood wanted to go in, we said, "Let all the neighbors buy a few acres, leave a green space, leave it going." They're like, "No, it needs to be development." Why can't it stay a green space? You sell it off. So when the city redid the ponds, did they know the developer wanted to do it, so you do something the developer had to do and put the ponds there anyway? So was the land gifted to the city? And if it was, if this goes through, what you could do with all the money the developers could give you for the land?
When we get to our portion of the discussion, we'll ask that question.
Just for procedural purposes, and I think this is confusing a lot of times where people have not attended. You guys can bring up issues, but you actually, you know, we can't answer your questions, but everyone's paying attention to what you're, what you're talking about, and they will ask questions afterwards.
So can the neighbors still buy the land off, you know, put a development in and leave a green space? leave a green space? Sell it off to the neighbors, leave a green space like everybody wants. Sell it per acre, that's what everybody in this area wants that left alone. It don't need to go to a new development. Because I told my wife before I showed up, I said, Southbrook's be cut through. She said, no, 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 no. Yeah, I live right behind Valley Elementary. Fortunately, I got a school there, will never be a cut through, hopefully, but you're going to be cutting into those people's backyards. And that ain't why they moved here and built that neighborhood.
Thank you.
Hi, Debbie Bryant, 3999 Willowcrest Road, resident since 1978. My issue is with the school system and the overcrowding. How are all these houses going to impact our schools? There's already, I would call it an emergency of overcrowding, and you know these type of subdivisions bring in more students. Yes, they will get property tax funds eventually, but what's the short-term plan to deal with this issue? Was the city given any incentive from the builder? If so, what portion of that should go to the schools? And did the city or county give any credits or abatements to the builder? If so, that, if so, does that make sense when we will need to increase expenditures in roads, utilities, schools, and police?
Thank you.
My name's Larry Bryant. I live at 3999 Willowcrest Road. Well, I'm wanting to know, when the other builders wanted to put a house back in there behind my house, they said they couldn't put a road back there because of the hill right there. Well, why, why is it now they're going to put a road in there? Who's paying, who's paying to knock that hill down that they were talking about knocking down? Is that, is that going to be our tax money, or what's going to happen there? And another thing is, you know, I lived there for almost forty-eight years in August here. I got a ditch out there that I can't even get cut. I've been cutting for forty-eight years, getting too old to cut it, can't get the city out there to cut it. I asked when they did the ditch, when they did all that digging for the pond and everything, if they would take that dirt and put it in my ditch. They said, no, no. You know, I don't understand this. We lived there, like I said, almost forty-eight years. I have no city lights. I have, I have no city trash. What, what am I getting from my city taxes that I'm paying here? Nothing. I don't understand that. I mean, what, what have we got in our whole city? Nothing. Our schools are going to hell, I think, fast. We don't, we're overcrowded. Our roads can't handle the traffic they have now. It's stupid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Clint Heiser, 1016 Woodhaven Place. I'm actually the five acres north of this. So what I really want to know is, I'm residential. I know it's zoned agriculture, but it's land-use residential. Why do I get to have seven houses behind me and everybody else only has one? It's just, it's not really the density I was told. Similar to what he said, I called when the land came available and said, hey, I've got five acres. I want to quadruple that, because it's a farm, right? So I wanted to purchase and extend southern words down towards where those ponds are now. And I was told, don't worry about it. We're going to go through, we're going to grade everything, we're going to put in drainage project, and after that's done, then we're going to go through and put in houses on quarter-acre lots or larger, because it has to match the existing plot plan. So right now, the way it's zoned, it's not going to match what I was told. I'm a little concerned about that.
Thank you.
Gary Johnson, I live at 3981 Willowcrest. My first thought was, is why are they having us up here as the community when decisions are probably already made? I mean, it's nice for you to ask us to come up here, but anyway, so no matter what we say, is it going to make a difference on this new zoning? Who makes those decisions? Us? Good question. Nobody's answered, anyway.
Thank you.
We'll get into it later, right?
Thank you. Yes, there'll be a second public hearing for the specific site plan. This is for the zoning.
Yes.
Yes, there'll be a second public hearing.
Who makes that decision whether it gets rezoned?
We'll discuss that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Glenn Fisher. I live at 3646 Southbrook Drive. My grandparents, as my parents mentioned, built their house back in 1973, so it was my great-grandma's. So I real, I've seen Beaver Creek through the years, I've heard about it, I've seen different communities grow up. There are several over by Costco, how it's changed there. I do have a unique perspective, as I worked on a mini-farm while I was back in high school, so over in New Jasper Township. So I've kind of seen how when you take away the deer and their land, it really affects it. Although we have Creekside Trail, I think it's very detrimental to take away this land. Like my dad said, I think that we should have some way for the neighbors to go and do it, so that we can own it locally. I do have a unique perspective as well, because I did study accounting at the University of Dayton, so I understand how governments work and how the accounting, where you have to sell more stuff or raise revenue in different ways. So that is why I think that you guys should leave it there, so that we can continue on the community that my grandparents moved here for. We have a garden, we do that. I understand you don't want chickens, that's not part of the thing. But we need to understand that Beaver Creek is, that it, what it's found on, we need, because we do have the park across the street, but I think that's only a partial problem that would help with animal life, but I think we should keep it as agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Good evening. I'm Ross Yuler. I live at 3781 Southbrook, so I'm the first house there by the building. First of all, I have a question. I feel like your calculation on density is off. You use fifty-four acres as your calculation, but also then you say eleven of those acres are actually ponds. And so I believe your calculation should be something less than fifty-four. It should be about forty-three to do your calculation density. The other thing I'm concerned about is not so much the lots that are closest to my house or to that part of Southbrook, but as you can see, as it gets closer to the larger lake there, those lot sizes get considerably smaller. I like the idea of having an option for some of the neighbors to purchase the land, but if we were to go forward with this, I would rather see those lot sizes being the same size as the lots that are there on Southbrook and Autumn Leaf, just to be, lowers the population density, lessens the amount of traffic that'd be coming through specifically Southbrook, going to, specifically going to the school, which would be probably one of the main traffic areas for residents there. I also think some of my neighbors there brought up some interesting points regarding infrastructure, specifically around the schools, and addressing that before we throw in a bunch of more residential houses that will require schools and other infrastructure from the city of Beaver Creek. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ah ha. Figured I'd get somebody else.
I have Tammy Curtis, 3202 Meadowlark Place. I am on the other side of Beaver Creek. I have lived in my house for twenty-five years. We were overseas for seven years. We were here before that, and I am astonished as to how much Beaver Creek has grown, and I am very disheartened. Beaver Creek needs to have green spaces for beavers to live and all of our other wildlife. I am a wildlife person. I live off of North Fairfield, and I've seen the wildlife in my neighborhood decrease dramatically. Now you want to take more? As far as the density, how close is this to any of your homes? Are you going to be dealing with the traffic area, with the traffic problems, and you as well, sir? We don't need any more. I also work for the school system. Our school systems are way too full. Where are you going to put all of these people and all of these children? And with this many more homes coming, that means more grocery stores, that means more pizza places, that means more gas stations, that means more banks and more hospitals. We don't need that. We do not need any more cement or blacktop or buildings in this area. We need green for our beavers to grow, for our wildlife to grow, and for us to be able to breathe. We, when we were gone, we knew that we wanted to come back to Beaver Creek for the school system and for the city. We love Beaver Creek. We didn't want to go to Oakwood, we didn't want to go to Kettering, we didn't want to go to anyplace else that's overcrowded. You have no green spaces in those cities. We do here. My children have been to all of those parks, and now you're going to take fifty-two more acres? I say no. No.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Elizabeth Allen. I live at 3987 Willowcrest Road. We are new to the area. We've been here five years, and I feel like we have a very strong community. And we moved here specifically for the school district. My daughter goes to Valley Elementary, she'll be in fifth grade this year. You know where she sat last year in fourth grade? On the floor, because there were no desks for her. She sat on the floor in a Beaver Creek City School. What, where are all these kids going to sit? Where do you think all of these kids are going to sit? They're going to sit on the floor.
Anybody else? I was always taught never to say, does anyone else have anything to say, because it scares them off. So, further comments. Okay? I'll close the public hearing and ask if we had any written input.
We did receive seven letters. Commissioners did receive a copy of each.
Thank you. Okay, it's our turn, and I'll start to my right.
So Josh, I'm going to put you on the spot to start. So are we legally allowed to consider schools when looking at approving this or denying this?
No. There's, the guidance is you can't use, it's a separate government entity, plus if schools were used as a zoning consideration, every zoning change has an impact on schools, and therefore, it would be arbitrary and capricious to deny one when you've approved others. So schools are not supposed to be considered in a zoning case.
Thank you.
Sure. So that helps when I'm closer, right? So schools are a separate government entity. We are, planning commission in the city is not supposed to consider the impact on schools in a zoning case. Reviewing zoning decisions based upon school impact tends to be an arbitrary and capricious decision, which would be overturned by the court if that's what your reliance is on. So there isn't, there's case law that's similar to that issue, that addresses that issue, that basically makes it so that you shouldn't consider the school impact.
Thank you. And that, just to be clear, that's Ohio, not the city saying that, right?
Correct, that's Ohio.
Randy, a few questions.
Sir.
So just, just to be clear, so this is low-density, right? It meets the definition of low-density?
Yes, anything under three dwelling units or an acre or lower is considered low-density residential.
Okay. And can you just go over how that density is calculated? Because we're at, what, 2.3? And I know there was talk about excluding some parts of the land, including parts, you know, all the land. Can you just tell everybody how that, the city does that?
The city just looks at the overall property, and whatever the acreage that is. You divide the total number of units by the overall acreage, and that's how you get dwelling units per acre. That's the density, that's how we've been calculating it. In a typical neighborhood setting, you wouldn't, in a typical farm, if you were rezoning a raw piece of land, you wouldn't have those ponds already to begin with. But regardless, it's, it's the total acreage, it's the total number of units divided by the total acreage. We don't exclude land. There are exceptions for that if it's up in the impact fee district, but not down in the area that's not in the impact fee district.
And then, I know there was a question on water, where they're getting water from. I believe I read that they're connecting to county water and sewer.
Yes, using Green County sanitary engineering for their water and the sanitary sewer. No, there's not going to be any wells out here.
Okay. And then I did have one question for the city engineer, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, good evening.
So I know we received a copy of your memo about the traffic study. Could you just give the highlight of that for everybody?
Sure. Generally, what the, the way the study came together was they took actual traffic counts at multiple existing intersections along Grange Hall Road. I think there was five intersections, they took actual traffic counts. And having those counts, they took the projected traffic from the proposed subdivision. They had not only the traffic from the subdivision going to Grange Hall Road, they also estimated additional traffic cutting through from the existing Autumn Springs subdivision to get out to Grange Hall Road. Knowing those existing counts, they took the, they projected trips from the proposed development, added those additional trips to what they actually counted at those intersections. And there's a methodology that you can use to estimate the overall delay on the intersection. And the delay, for what it's worth, is equated back to a level of service. It goes from A to F, where A being the best and F being the worst. And the bottom-line result was, when they took those trips and added them to the existing traffic, they found that delay changed very, very little. Everything was at a level of sort of C, I believe, or better. So the bottom-line result was, the additional trips added to the existing volumes at the intersections didn't really increase delay for traffic.
Which then means that it's, the roads are adequate for this development?
That's correct. There were no improvements that were identified that were necessary based on the additional trips.
Okay, thank you. Questions I have?
Since it comes up in every meeting, I thought I'd mention this as well. I can quote the Supreme Court on the traffic rules. While traffic is a byproduct of zoning activities, quote, "Increased traffic flow is not a sufficient reason to strike down a zoning ordinance." That's from a case in 1942 that has been cited dozens, if not a hundred, times. So you can't consider traffic, especially when there's a traffic study that says that it's sufficient. With that, let's go to the traffic study. Mr. Mooreman, can you come back up? I think this is more you than, I was going to wait till the site plan, but this is premature, let's do it now. So reviewing the traffic study, which I did do, I found no estimates given for a possible future Southbrook connection, even though people could leave, should all this go through approvals, leave to the east. They're not heading to the base, they're not heading to the major shopping areas. All that's west, which is where Grange Hall Road comes in. But there was nothing at all anticipating the only other way out, which is Southbrook. Can you explain why the traffic study did not have any estimates even for exiting through Southbrook?
Sure. The major focus of the traffic study was the major intersections, where, you know, the majority of the trips, the majority of the traffic volumes are all directed towards the major routes in the city. So that's kind of the focus, where, you know, obviously, common sense would tell you there'll be some additional trips where people will choose to go from this neighborhood and will travel east through the existing Autumn Springs neighborhood. However, those trips would be very, very low, and you wouldn't anticipate like a traffic jam on those streets in that existing plat, where the, again, the focus of the study is where all the major amount of vehicles are and the function of the intersections.
Well, I'm just looking at it myself, and I don't share living there already as Mr. Yuler did, but he brought up the same point I had, which is, in the second phase, apparently in 2026, it's a full year away, should that go forward, he is going to be the initial bearer of any traffic, even in a low count, going by his home every day, which could inhibit a use. So my concern is, since we-
the majority of the trips, the majority of the traffic volumes are all directed towards the, the major routes in the city. So, that's kind of the focus, where, you know, obviously, common sense would tell you there'll, there'll be some additional trips where people will choose to go from this neighborhood and will travel east through the existing Autumn Springs neighborhood. However, those trips would be very, very low, and you wouldn't anticipate, like, a traffic jam on, on those streets in that existing plat, where the, again, the focus of the study is where all the, the major amount of vehicles are and the, the function of the intersections.
Well, I'm just looking at it myself, and I don't share living there already, as Mr. Euler did, but he brought up the same point I had, which is, in the second phase, apparently, in 2026, it's a full year away, should that go forward, he is going to be the initial bearer of any traffic, even in a low count, going by his home every day, which could inhibit his use. So, my concern is, since we can't talk about it per 1942 Supreme Court decision, at the same time, from a livability standpoint, zoning is going to, if it goes ahead, allow this property to have more than one egress and ingress, and the only way is going right by his house in Southbrook. So, what are we building into this zoning decision, knowing what's going to happen to Southbrook if we have no estimates for a traffic study?
Again, I wouldn't anticipate a huge number. The, the count now, I would say, is pretty close to zero. So, you know, because it's, it's a dead-end stub street into a farm field. So, I guess you have to, to ask yourself, when Autumn Springs was built, why was it that street was, was made to dead-end into that farm field? Where the logical conclusion would be...
Yeah, I agree with you. I'm just saying, should this go forward, someone living in Phase Two and wants to get on the Indian Ripple Road, they're going to cut right by Southbrook to go down. They're not going all the way back to Grange Hall and, and come back. They're just going to go to the right and go down. So, that should be, to me, a part of the traffic study, is the estimate possible future uses if the zoning goes through. That's why I was siding so much with Mr. Euler. So, is there anything we can do before 2026, should that Phase Two go through, if this is approved, that would allow some kind of understanding of what we can do with that second egress?
Yeah, we could, we could project some, some trips, but again, I wouldn't anticipate like a, like a log jam, or, you know, or, you know, traffic snarls going through by Mr. Euler's house. There will obviously be more additional cars. I don't think anybody can really dispute that. But I, I wouldn't think it would be an extremely high number, where it would be detrimental...
Probably nothing until Phase Two.
Well, it's, it's zero now, yeah, because it's dead-end street, right?
I'm, where I'm going with this is, even though we're looking at the site plan tonight as well, when this Phase Two goes through, they will have to, I'm assuming, they will have to come back for a final approval of the Phase Two. Even though we might, we might not be approving the zoning in the site plan tonight, should it all go forward, they would be coming back. That would give us time to really understand traffic impacts for that Phase Two, because they would have to come back here for approval.
Sure, and Randy, please correct me, but I think tonight, the, the site plan will be approved by, by Planning Commission this evening, where in the future, you'll see the, the record plan, the actual plat, but you're not going to see the, the site plan again. This is the, the one-time.
For my own education, Randy, even though we don't have Bridlewood tonight, which was removed, that was going for the final review of the subdivision, which is where I thought of, in the same instance, thank you, Jeff, the same instance on this, when they go to a Phase Two, they're going to be coming back to us, in Planning Commission anyway, which will give people more opportunity to understand the traffic count on Southbrook.
They, they will be coming back. It wouldn't be, it would be in an open public meeting, but there wouldn't be public input. But it would be as a decision item to approve the record plan, which is the legal document that the applicant would record with the county to actually create those buildable lots. But yeah, I, the staff doesn't have the authority to create buildable lots, so we'd have to come back to Planning Commission to...
So, there would be another opportunity to look at additional traffic data, should that be found?
There could be, yeah.
Okay, all right. Then, my other area is on the reservoirs. Would that be you or Mr. Mormon up again to ask questions?
Terms of...
Well, in the nine conditions for the zoning, since that's all we're focusing on now, there's no conditions relating to the reservoirs. And even though the reservoirs would apparently come back significantly impacted, if any, to Phase Two, should that come through, in Phase One, they still are going to be constructing. And I, I find, either in the 34 conditions for the site plan, which is the latter part of this meeting, and the nine conditions for now, nothing talks about the maintaining of the operations of the reservoirs during the entire process. And these reservoirs have solar panels, they have piping, they have fountains for recirculation. They have a lot of things going on right now, that over the next year to two, should this go forward, would be impacted, whether constructions on the west side or the east side in Phase Two. And would we not have a condition, either in the zoning or in the site plan, that focuses on who is taken care of, maintaining, and paying the cost of keeping these reservoirs going? Because I don't see anything in either, either part now.
Right. The, whomever owns the property, the land underneath the ponds is responsible for maintaining the ponds. And so, should this move forward while they're under construction, it'll be up to them to maintain. And we do have a easement over top of them, a stormwater easement, so if they're, they were not doing it for whatever reason, and it was causing impact off-site, we have the authority to go in and make the, whatever repairs or cleans necessary, and then bill it back to the property owner, whatever the cost it is to repair that. But really, it's up to the property owner to maintain the ponds.
Is that not the applicant that's before us tonight?
They do not own the property yet.
Okay. So, who is the, in fact, that was one of the questions we were going to bring, who is the property owners now?
The Beaver Creek Development Corporation, which is the economic development arm of the city. So, the city.
Because one of the things that caused me in the zoning for my questions is, do we have a need for a condition to put what you just said in either the zoning or the site plan or both, to say, should it move forward, the owner of the property will maintain not only the condition of the reservoirs, but the operations of the reservoirs? With the piping, the recirculation, the solar panel powering, all that's currently there now.
What I'm, I think, if it's already required, I don't think we need to add it as an additional...
Well, it's not, I don't see that.
It's statutorily required in our, in our general code of ordinances. If Planning Commission were, wanted to do that, I mean, it wouldn't hurt anything, but I would recommend you do that in the site plan, not, not the legislation.
Okay. I agree. Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarity. I only have one last question, which goes to the turning lanes. Again, in the traffic study, it was recommended for the deceleration lane going north in Grange Hall and a possible left turn going south. Given all the stuff from the public hearing yesterday, which I was not at for the Grange Hall widening, and the notion of walkways on the west side for the new park, how much of the lane modification of Grange Hall would we be taking into account now for the rezoning approval, when it's a whole separate situation that was talked about yesterday? That's a separate meeting for the residents here.
Right, no, I'll defer that to Jeff. And once again, for zoning, you're not supposed to consider the traffic.
Well, I brought it up because the traffic study brought up the recommendations for the deceleration going north and for the left turn going south.
It's more of a site plan.
Okay, so a site plan issue, okay. I'll bring you back up later then. Thank you, Randy. But that will be a question.
Don't run off, Jeff. Or Randy. It, it's difficult for us to try to keep the zoning part separate from the specific site plan question, so if I stray into the wrong area, please stop me.
I need a button.
The, one point that I, that has been, it's difficult to, to, to figure out, even when you've been doing this for a while, is the role of the Planning Commission and the role of city council. In 99% of what we do, we are advisory to the city council, and our lawyer here is going to correct me if I'm wrong. We are advisory. What we vote on goes to city council as either a recommendation to approve or a recommendation to deny. It, it behooves then city council to make the decision, the final decision, to make an ordinance out of this. There are a very few instances, instances where things do not go forward to city council. They, they live or die with us. This is not one of them. So, we are advisory. And city council usually upholds us, but not always. So, we are constrained by what our zoning code says. We cannot go against what the zoning code says, or we will open ourselves as city up to an expensive lawsuit. So, we have to look at what the law says and act accordingly. City council has a little more wiggle room. They could be sued too. But, the, that, that's where we stand, and I want you all to understand that. We take into consideration what you say. We are interested in what you say. We may be sympathetic to what you say, but we have to look at the law and what the law says and make our decisions based on that. So, after I've, after I've flogged that to death, I've got a couple of questions. I'm going to put you on the spot, Randy, just a little bit. What's the size of, of Spring House Park? How many acres?
148.
148 acres. So, we've got 148 acres of green space that's going to stay green space forever.
Forever, yes.
Yeah, no, pretty much. Let's put it, let's say, in our lifetimes, anyway.
For a very long time.
Okay. So, we do have plenty of green space nearby. Help me out here, but I, I remember when we originally approved the, the research park. That, was that property at the time designated as research park or as single family? I don't remember.
It was owned by, this property, these 54 acres, was, were owned by Miami Valley Research Park, but it's, it wasn't part of their, I guess, for lack of a better term, their homeowner, their owners' association that guided uses and architectural for their business, businesses. So, it was owned by them, but not part of the Miami Valley Research Association.
Okay, so, it would have still been up to, to the city to determine what would be put there?
Zoning and, yes.
Okay. Just wanted, wanted to clear that up, because I honestly, I honestly don't remember that. It was a long time ago. Now, one of the things that was brought up, and this may go to specific site plan, but I'm going to say it anyway, this always surprised me, when you're talking about trips per dwelling unit. Characterize multifamily versus single family.
Single family does have the highest number of trips per day, per unit, comparative to multifamily. Multifamily's 40% fewer, I believe, around there. And then, it's even fewer if you're 55 and up, multifamily. But yeah, single family is the highest trip per day.
So, if we put a couple hundred apartments on this property, there would, there'd be less traffic? Not that we're going to do it, but...
In theory, yes.
In theory, yeah.
But that, the way, the math says that, yes.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all I've got. Second helping's gentleman. Okay. We are then looking for, I am looking for a motion, and this is on the rezoning for the, for the three parcels. And I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve PUD 25-4 with the attached nine conditions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any last statements here? Okay, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries, three, zero. And now, we will move into the second part of this, which is the specific site plan. And this gets into a lot more detail, so you're not going to...
No, I already read it.
You already read it, okay. It's up to our developer to come up and tell us about your specific site plan, please.
Thank you again. Jim Lipnose, Rockford Homes, 999 Flares Parkway, Columbus, Ohio. I just take, I want to take a, like a, like a half a step back, talk about the zoning and the, the site, specific site plan itself. We, we are meeting your compliance standards and, and the future land use. And just for the record, we have agreed to the, was it nine conditions on the, on the zoning and the 34 conditions on the specific site plan. Additionally, to answer Mr. Fountain's question, the HOA will own and maintain all the open space on the property, including the ponds. So, they will be part of the...
Thank you, thank you. I was more focused on construction period, but yeah.
Oh, well, during the construction period, as soon as we take ownership of it, Rockford would be responsible. Then, last and foremost, I just want to touch on the traffic. The traffic study did not require both turn lanes. We are voluntarily doing that, understanding that the improvement's going across the street with the park, and we want to be good stewards of that. So, again, here to answer any questions, if we've got specific questions regarding the site plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
From a specific site plan standpoint, I really don't have much to add. But again, I'll be, we still recommend approval and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. We go back again, we, we backtrack. We're starting now, we're looking at the specific site plan, the way the streets are laid out, the way the lots are laid out. Anything having to do with that? If you'd like to come forward and make comments, please do so. And y'all did real good on the, on the first public hearing. We didn't have to gavel anybody down, so step on up and speak your piece. Brand-new three minutes this time.
Hello again, Ross Euler, 3781 Southbrook. So, one thing that I'm concerned about regarding these site plans is removal of about a 20-yard green space between the existing neighborhood and the new neighborhood that's being proposed. Not only is it a privacy concern for those existing houses there along Autumn Leaf, but I will attest, having pretty much 80% of the trees that were along that side of my lot removed for the addition of those ponds there, that it does do a, does have a significant impact on noise levels in our yard, as well as weather impacts. So, the first year, we've been there for two years, so I guess I'm the newest person that stepped to this podium to speak my concerns. But the first winter we were there, we had no issues with the wind coming across, because we had those trees there. But last winter, once those trees were removed, we had significant damage being done to our property there. Not only did we have new trees that were blown sideways, but I had, my grill was blown over by the wind coming across, because that barrier was no longer there as a buffer against the wind. And so, you're going to have weather impacts for all those houses down there, once you remove those trees, as well as noise impact. We can certainly hear Grange Hall a lot clearer, and we can hear noise off of 675 a lot clearer, since they removed those trees there as well. So, I would request that we keep that buffer, about a 20, 20-yard buffer or so of the trees that are existing there, between this proposed neighborhood and the existing neighborhoods surrounding it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Fisher, 3646 Southbrook Drive, Beaver Creek, 45430. Again, I'm down next to, I'm in Shaker Heights portion of Southbrook Drive, so I, my house backs up to Valley School. And I'm going to just go with the traffic study that we talked about. A C is average, until we build something else up and down through there. And I know this all can't be part of what your choices are, but I would challenge your engineer to the fact that that isn't going to impact Southbrook Drive, because I'm going to tell you that when Autumn Springs goes in there, you can come at my house any day, a half an hour before to an hour after school lets out every day, and I cannot get in and out of my driveway. Because nobody rides their bike anymore, nobody walks to school, and all that property is not going to be school bus. So, I'm the one that's going to feel the impact of it, myself and the gentlemen here. There's about eight to 10 houses along Southbrook there that's going to feel the impact of that. And I can tell you right now that the people from Autumn Springs quite often come up Southbrook, come up Southbrook to Bridlewood, because it's a straight shot versus the crooked road through Autumn Springs. So, the impact is actually going to be very real, and I would challenge them to come out and, and do that. I also feel that the grading, now that we've just fixed that, the site plan with the large amount of homes in the back there and along that pond, are also going to create a problem again for these people in Willow Crest. So, you know, Beaver Creek giveth, Beaver Creek taketh away again. They're going to be back in the same situation that they're in with the grading. And, and you put more, you're going to put more concrete back here. That's exactly what they said took years and years of, of issue with the grading, was the water pounding it down and down. All that concrete's going to go back, right back into these people's property again. I mean, I think we can do better. I think if we're going to do it, and you're going to do it, because you own it, it needs to be better. It needs to be planned so that it accommodates those people who have been there, and then I'm going to also disagree with that traffic study, that it needs to change. Thank you.
Mike Canistaro, 897 Autumn Leaf Drive. I have concerns about the Southbrook connection. I wonder why it's necessary. Randy's presentation said it was to limit the traffic on the main roads. The traffic study was focused on the main roads. What about Autumn Leaf Drive? There's about 45 houses in the .3 mile... about Autumn Leaf Drive? There's about forty-five houses in the point-three miles to get to Southbrook from the entrance. We have one entrance. Basically, we butt up against the Valley Elementary there. So what happens when you add a hundred and twenty-one houses, half of which are in the two phases adjacent to our neighborhood? Let's call it sixty. You go from forty-five to sixty houses. So what's the necessity of the Southbrook connection? It's to limit the main roads. What about our traffic? Why can't there be one entrance to and from Grange Hall Road? If you visit residential areas, which are gated communities, there's one way in and one way out. It's been shown to prevent crime. Think like a burglar. What do you want? Right? So in addition, has anybody ever gone south on Grange Hall Road to get to six-seventy-five and had your GPS navigate where you're going? It wants me to go through Dan Hur. You know, I, I don't go through there, because that's a residential neighborhood. So when you have non-native traffic, I don't know about the five exits per units. I'm talking delivery vehicles. People delivering a washing machine. Somebody wants to pour a swimming pool. I don't know what the HOA is going to, you know, all sorts of that kind of traffic is going to come through our street. And none of the traffic study has even addressed a baseline of that. So I can tell you this, more numbers. To the south of me, my nine neighbors to the south, on that straight bend, the straight thing with a little curve, there are six households with small children. And so when you have local traffic, like myself, I know which houses might have a ball spill out of the driveway with a kid running after it, or somebody on their bike. But nobody following their GPS who's non-native or cutting through the neighborhood has that kind of empathy. So I'm concerned about the cut-through opportunities. Make them impossible. Let their traffic be their traffic, and our traffic be our traffic. I don't see the necessity, except the only concern is on the main roads. And I'm concerned about the kiddos, the next generation of kiddos in our neighborhood. I raised two kids for twenty-two years in that neighborhood. It was peaceful, it was safe. I want to keep that going. So please consider a modification to the site plan with one entrance in and out of Grange Hall. You're going to expand it, anyway. Thank you.
Your timing was perfect. You were right at three minutes. Good for you.
I'm Jackie Frederick. I live at ten-twelve Stanwick Drive. And I'm not totally affected by all of this, other than back, if anybody remembers, years ago when Ober was doing a development, and they were going to cut through on River Hill into my neighborhood. And I knew everybody was probably going to try, oh, you're going to go out Grange Hall? No, I can just zip through River Hill, Stanwick, and get the same way. So I knew right away that Southbrook was going to be a concern. Not the number of cars, which now I realize that's more of a concern, too, but I think of people zipping through the neighborhood. And that was my concern back then, in my neighborhood. And now it's, even though it's not right, cutting into my neighborhood, I want to say, yes, I agree with everybody about the Southbrook issue, because I wouldn't want all this traffic, just people flying through my neighborhood. That's it.
Thank you.
My name's Scott Perry. I live at three-nine-nine-eight Willowcrest Road, right on the corner of Grange Hall and Willowcrest. So yeah, I understand people's issues with traffic. I'm not real happy if everybody wants to dump it all on me, or they're on Grange Hall Road, though, either, because I'm right on the very corner. And you're talking about putting in turn lanes over there. I don't know where the turn lanes are going to start, where they're going to stop. And you want to run all the construction in to that development off of Grange Hall Road? Well, I live, like I say, right on the corner of Grange Hall and Willowcrest. What am I supposed to do? Maybe they want to buy my house.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. Tom Clark, three-nine-nine-five Willowcrest Road, on the yellow patches at the upper left. I'd be one, two, three, and so we're going to have a real good view of all the construction that's going to go on for four years, did you say? Four years? Ish? Okay. So, having gone through the dust and noise of the Willowcrest improvement last year, I would like to ask the builder, if, or for you folks to ask them, if there'll be something to abate the dust and noise of four years of construction. I see in the plan that it can only go on Willow, Grange, I'm sorry, from Grange Hall, that's right. All construction vehicles must go in and out for four years from Grange Hall Road, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So anything you can do to abate that would be great. I would like to know if all the land will again be stripped, as it was last summer. I still haven't power washed all the back of my house, because it is filthy, and I knew that more construction was coming. So if the, if the land will be stripped again, in order to put down sod, there'll be more dust. I would like to know at what point the road will be paved that comes off of Grange Hall for phase one. That way, there'll be less dust with the construction vehicles going in and out. If there's a way I can get that information, I'd appreciate it. And will there be pedestrian access from River Hill? I'd like to be a good neighbor to the new people in the nice, expensive homes that are coming in next to me. And if there'll be pedestrian, that means we can walk our dog. Also, the folks in the new area, that will have no trees, would love to come into our beautiful Woodhaven neighborhood and enjoy the shade of Willowcrest and River Hill and all of our other streets. I know that many of these things are foregone conclusions when they come before this board. And the original vote today was that you recommend a city council, correct, that this go forward. And I think most of us knew that coming here, or suspected that that would happen. And thank you for listening, but I think we knew which direction it was going to go. The, the fact that we're, we're going to have new neighbors, I knew this. We were lucky enough to live for thirty-five years at our current home and look at an open field. And we pretty much knew that something was going to be developed someday. So I'm hoping that, for the best, for this. And I thank you all, by the way, for your service and my neighbors. It's good to see some of you here. But I think we know which way it's going to go, and so for us to make the best of it is probably a good idea. I think I'm under three minutes.
Thank you. Plenty of mic time for everybody.
Hello, sir. Dave Nunley, coming off thirty-nine ninety, Rexford Road, straight at my driveway. If you look, large piece of concrete right there, that's mine. Just one question. Coming into the schools, we're already taxed to the gills with our property taxes. You're coming in with a hundred and twenty-one family members. The schools are already running out. Is there any kind of concessions for the school systems? Luckily, I do not have a dog in the hunt, as far as my daughter's out of school now. However, I do have grandbabies. So with that said, is there, you, as a lawyer, said schools don't matter a rat's tail. So is that a fact?
For a zoning decision.
For a zoning decision.
For specific site plan, I think they're really irrelevant. That's the layout of the buildings within, in a, in a plan. I mean, schools are a separate political entity. If you want to support them, you can support them through your, the levies that they bring before the citizens.
And that's correct. And we've been voting down school levies, because they keep going up a hundred dollars per one thousand, or even better. So what about the school systems? Is my question, and the taxes. So kind of hand in hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Emily Euler. I'm at thirty-seven eighty-one, Southbrook Drive, the one right next to the retention pond. And I guess I was curious, and a little bit, this may be backtracking a little bit. When they said that the density level was still under the three units per acre for R1A, then why did we need to change it to RPUD? Because I'm concerned that that means that they can just get smaller and smaller with these lots. And these are really small lots, and really tight housing. And so I don't know why we had to change R1A to RPUD in order to approve this plan. And I'm also curious, it, River Hills, is that River Hills Road? Is that what that is? So they're not feeling the necessity to connect that to the neighborhood, so I'm curious if the builder could find another way to loop the road around, so that it has two entry and, and exit points within their own space without connecting to Southbrook, since they're not needing to connect to River Hills either. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Fisher, thirty-six forty-six, Southbrook Drive, Beaver Creek, Ohio, four-five-four-three-zero. I am opposed to it as it currently sits, living on Southbrook. So where that would most connect would be Autumn Springs and Southbrook. And then ours would be the next one over, which would be Briarwood and Southbrook. I am concerned about the delivery trucks coming down there. And, and as these people get to know the neighborhood, if this does go through as planned, there would be a bunch of people, according to GPSs or things, that would map them down there. And being a dead-end street, we would have tons of people turning around there. As we mentioned during the school time of year, that we probably fit twenty cars down there, and it becomes a parking lot. So as this currently sits, we're going to have a bunch of cars down there, turning around hours of the day. It's going to be impossible to gather a driveway. So I'm asking that you not connect to Southbrook, and like, stay on their land as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Willhell, three-nine-nine-one Willowcrest Road. Again, I've been in my house about fifty-five years. I'm very disappointed to see what the city is doing, especially since the city owns it. I'd like to know, we're sure that we're not going to connect to River Hill at any time? I'd like to know what the easement is that's going to be behind my house, dimension-wise. I've, if I haven't misunderstood, I've heard HOA thrown around. Do they have any say-so about my property? And after this meeting, do we, as residents, have any course to try to stop this development? Thank you.
Thank you. Take your time. We won't shut you down.
I guess.
We might.
Yep, that's true.
Go over three minutes.
Okay, three minutes. I got you. So I'm Jeff Cruzinsbury. I live at eight-eight-seven Autumn Leaf Drive, next-door neighbor to Mike. And I know it's kind of selfish, that just worried about our little section right there, but like what Mike said, the kids, we've kind of flipped over and out, where we got younger couples in there with a lot of kids that have moved in there. And we do have HOA, but it's really not policed. It never really has been, and we've never had any problems. But people are allowed to park in the street. So if we have, just not a party, but just regular time, people will park on the street, and it actually turns it to a one-lane road. And then if you've got four or five houses on each side of the street, people are parking in the street, it might be a lot of congestion building up there. And then like what Mike said, with younger families in the neighborhood, young kids, we know what to look for and keep our speed limit accordingly, twenty-five or at least less. And, but it, it, I think it will create problems, because people are still allowed to park in the street, because they can. And I think that's about all I got. So just worried about safety for the kids and the families in the neighborhood. All right.
Thank you. And you waving that gavel to get somebody up?
James Curry, eight-four-three, Autumn Leaf Drive. My biggest concern, as well, is as most of the folks here have said, has been that Southbrook connection. I've got two small kids, worried about traffic in the area. I understand that it's a fire department regulation slash safety mandatory thing to do. Are there any options we can pursue that does not directly connect it? Maybe get it close and don't pave it all the way, put a gate there, put some rocks in the way. Something that allows it to be used in an emergency to meet the fire department regulations, while not making it a permanent go-back-and-forth for everybody to use every day. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll wave it one more time. Okay, I will close the public hearing and ask if we had any written input on this.
We did. We received seven letters, and the commissioners received a copy of each.
Great. Thank you very much. And I'm going to start on my left this time.
Randy, can you come back up?
So, going back to the traffic and the study on the Grange Hall Road, given what happened yesterday is a signifier of what's coming possibly for Grange Hall Road widening. What assurances will we have as a condition in the thirty-four we already have or not, that the deceleration lane and the left turn, all those kind of things, will still be taken in consideration if Grange Hall Road widening does not go through, or if it does go through will impact and change the entrance off of Grange Hall Road for this development? How are the two linked together, and one dictating the other, if at all?
Well, as part of this project, they'll need to build the D cell lanes and the right turn lane. And any future project on Grange Hall Road would take the exist, whatever's existing at the time, which would include those D cell lanes as part of their design, within their design guidelines, whether that be expanding upon them or shifting them. But we wouldn't, I couldn't envision a standpoint where they would remove them as part of an upgrade to Grange Hall Road.
So what, excuse me for not remembering the title of yesterday's public gathering for Grange Hall, but would the widening project in any way control or, or have authority legally to change what the developer would end up doing for the entrance? So what we see in the site plan may or may not eventually happen in two, three years?
Our engineers speak more on that than I do, so I'll bring them up.
And again, to the residents, there was an open house for the Grange Hall widening project, which was held yesterday for an eventual lane widening and sidewalk addition of Grange Hall Road.
Good evening, Mr. Fountain. Just to correct you with what was yesterday. Yesterday was the public involvement meeting for the side path project.
Just that, yeah.
Yes. There's no widening that's going on with Grange Hall right now that's funded. The side, I'll just kind of briefly, briefly go over what that project was, since you brought it up. That project will take place starting at Lefino Park. We will add, which you can't see it here, but I mean, oh, I guess you can. So basically, Lefino Park is down south of this area, south of Shaker Town Road. What we will be doing is adding sidewalk along the west side of Shaker Town, or, excuse me, the west side of Grange Hall Road, from Lefino Park up to Shaker Town Road. From Shaker Town Road, then through, up to Patterson, we will actually be constructing a twelve-foot-wide path within the park itself, and that meanders off the roadway back in through the park, and is part of that east side of that trail that was shown in the Master Park Plan. When you get back out of, thank you, Randy, for that. But yeah, so basically what Randy has put up there is roughly the path. It looks a little different. We actually will have the displays up on our website for that project tomorrow. Hopefully, we're going to get those in. From Patterson Road, that will connect back into a sidewalk that will run along Patterson Road up to eight-thirty-five. So that's, and that'll be on the west side of the road there, too. So that's what that project will entail. That sidewalk and side path, the sidewalk in the park area through there is roughly, the closest it gets is about seventy-five feet from the existing roadway. So no matter what we do with that, that path will not be impacted by any future widens that would happen when they would be funded, if it would be funded. that would happen when they would be funded, if and when they would be funded, so, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
You're welcome.
Randy, going back to you on the reservoir, you said it might be a site plan issue. So I'm still concerned over the two-to-three-year timeframe, knowing how well the reservoir is operating now with all its piping and aeration spouts and solar panels and everything, that as we go from the Beaver Creek Development Corporation through the developer and on eventually to the HOA, that nothing is dropped on the operation? Not just the maintenance during construction, but the operation of the reservoirs? Because they're so required, not only for the minimization of dust and construction debris, but because they're so mechanically driven right now just to be operating for filtration. So is a condition the way that this would be done, or statutorily you're saying, does it go, excuse me, go through the owners? Is there a need for a condition? Or will the legal aspect of ownership automatically include operation as well as maintenance?
Yeah, I mean, the, statutorily, I mean, would be covered, that the owner will be in charge of maintaining the pond. Now, one of the conditions of approval stated that an HOA documents need to be reviewed, be presented, before I record the first section, they have to submit a copy of the HOA docs that are going to be recorded with the county and have the engineer, our legal team review the documentation and will ensure that there's specific language in there for the stormwater detention ponds as is.
Yeah, because they're not static ponds, they're fully operational, solar-powered, with flow, piping and everything.
Make sure that there's fountains in there so that you don't get the moss growing and everything.
I just want to make sure it doesn't get, as it goes owner, 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 it's not dropped. And they say, well, it looks fine, but it's not operating.
No, and like I said, we have a, an easement, a stormwater detention easement over it that gives the city the authority to go in and inspect it as needed. And if needed, we can repair it and then bill it back to the property owner.
Okay.
Condition 28 also talks about maintenance of the pond.
As well, well, I was separating maintenance and operation because of the active filtration that goes on at the two reservoirs.
Shall we maintain in perpetuity?
Okay. I have one, one more, Mr. Chairman. Going back to the, again with Southbrook, because I know that's such a concern for the residents, and it was for me as well, again, would that be a condition that we would look at formally? Any egress, ingress, egress, traffic counts or something to modify the traffic information we already have to ensure that as Phase Two goes in, even though we're just talking now for the initial site plan, but as Phase Two goes in, that it becomes something that a future planning commission or whatever takes into inclusion of the review for the entrance and egress in Southbrook?
Really, the intent, I know I'd mentioned previously about one of the major reasons is to keep road, keep traffic off of the main roads. But it also, in our subdivision regulations state that you can't have a subdivision with, I think it's like 36 homes, without a secondary exit point. I mean, I know Mr. Self's old neighborhood, he fought for years to get a secondary access point and finally got it, but at the point, at the time, there was 240-plus homes that don't, 309 homes that had only one access point onto Jonathan Drive. And that, that is a, that's a fire hazard, it's a safety hazard, because if something happens at that intersection and the EMS can't get by it, then you've got all these homes that have, cannot get the help that they need. And these, all the roads that they're going to be constructing inside the, inside the development are public streets, they'll be public streets maintained by the city, but they're constructed to public standards. And so, we don't have any instance where we cut off a public street with a gate that only allows.
So what you're, what you're saying is just without a special condition needing to be added to the 34 we already have, it's automatically going to be taken care of because of its public nature, fire requirements nature, ingress, egress nature, that Southbrook will be established as an adequate connection for the counts of the homes in there and the vehicle counts?
Correct. And, and also, I mean, I know we're thinking one-way direction that everyone from this neighborhood will be coming, will only be benefiting of the multiple connections, but I've gone through a lot of neighborhoods in the past with this kind of interconnection that the neighborhood, the existing residents don't like. And I've found that the existing neighbors also use the new roads to get out to Grange Hall. So if somebody that lives in Autumn Springs now wants to go north on Grange Hall, they'll have the option of bypassing the intersection at Shaker Town and Grange Hall, that light there, and go through this new neighborhood and turn right onto Grange Hall.
So no electronic tollway would be added?
No. But it does go both ways on that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Randy. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
The no-grade zone, I believe I read this correct, but that prohibits cutting trees or not?
What it, no, we've run into these problems in the past where you start prohibiting the cutting of trees, then it comes back to the, the private property owner takes over that spot and they've got scrub trees or fallen, or half-dead trees, and they've got a law that says they can't remove them. And we don't want to create that situation. What we're proposing and what the staff, or what the condition states is that as they're grading the site, as they're making it ready for construction, they're to put flags out 25 feet from the property line where you see in red and 20 feet from the property line where you see in orange, and they're not allowed to touch that during the grading process. So it's a grading limit.
And not touch that during the process would include them cutting trees?
Correct.
Okay, just making sure. And let's see, you touched on the roads a little bit, but I know somebody asked the question of who pays for the roads, that's going to be paid for by the developer.
The developer's paying for the roads.
And they'll be built to city standards?
Correct.
And then the width of the roads, I know sometimes people have concerns about the parking on the roads.
Right. I mean, other than the front road, it's hard to see on this, I can't use a laser pointer, but the first seven lots before you make that first curve on the west side of the property, that's 36-foot-wide lanes or pavement, just because that's kind of the pinch point for the whole neighborhood. That's where everybody's going to be coming in that way. But then once you get past that, it's the typical neighborhood road width that we have in almost every other neighborhood in the city, which is the 26-foot, or 20, 26-foot back-to-back curb.
Okay. Let's see, the timing of the turn lanes on Grange Hall, did you touch on that? If I'm, if you did, I'm sorry if I missed it.
They're going to have to be, and the engineers could, might be able to answer better than I can, but from my understanding that, I mean, they're going to have to be building those before they start opening up homes for Phase One now.
They could do grading, but just?
Right. Before they start selling homes for the, I mean, they might build one home, I mean, every neighborhood, when we do a new neighborhood, we can release a model home permit fairly quickly. But then when they start grading, or start building more homes, you know, we're going to see that improvement done.
And so you basically, we just wouldn't release the permits until that was done?
I'd have to double-check with engineering, but that's the intent.
Okay.
Or at least, at the bare minimum, we would hold on to a bond in the amount it costs to do that so that they can.
In case the city had to do it. Somebody asked why we had to rezone, could you touch on that a little bit?
Yeah. A, the front portion of the property is owned agriculturally, so the minimum lot size is five acres on an agriculturally-owned property. Now, and so, I mean, there's just not, there's not a market or interest in doing five-acre lots, especially with the cost of infrastructure as it is. The R1A, that has a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet and, but you lose, it's a give and take, okay? So you, if they developed it as an R1A, we wouldn't be able to enforce any kind of the 25-foot grade limits that could grade right up to the property line. We wouldn't be able to enforce any kind of house-size limitations other than nothing but less than 1,200 square feet. We wouldn't be able to enforce any architectural, architectural elements, such as with this proposal, they have to do everything in hardy plank or stone or brick, where on an R1A, they could do all vinyl siding houses. We wouldn't be able to control or have input on, it's kind of moot at this point, but like the stormwater detention pond, it can be just a depression in the ground that fills in with dirt and mud and not water with fountains and air. We wouldn't have control over requirements for photocell light on each property or trees in every lot. I mean, there's a lot you would lose and a lot that we gain by doing a PUD. And that's part of the trade-off of a PUD is, you know, there are going to be some smaller lot sizes in the center, you've got your cluster development in the center, but we can, we can add on conditions about extra turn lane on Grange Hall. No cut, or no grade limits on the property lines, extra upgraded architectural materials, landscaping out on, on Grange Hall to help, you know, soften the neighborhood from the public point of view on Grange Hall. Just a lot of give and take on that, and that's why we do PUDs.
So overall, in that positive, is a PUD versus just the straight?
Depending on your point of view, but yes.
Okay. And I know you touched on it a little bit in your presentation, but the stormwater runoff, it can be no worse than it is today, right?
Right.
After they construct this. And if it was, they would have to come back then and build bigger ponds?
And the ponds, I mean, the ponds were built to handle the development. What they're going to have to do is make sure the grading on the lots and the grading on the street causes the water to go into the culverts that are on the road or in between the lots so that the water gets into that and ultimately to the pond. So that's part of a whole stormwater management plan in addition to building the ponds, but we've got that, that step has already been taken, but they've got to make sure the water gets to it.
And if something went wrong and they made it worse, they would have to come and fix it, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. I don't know if this is a question more for the applicant or you, but the half-circle that's off Road B?
Yeah, that was a unique thing. We, that's going to be a private driveway.
Okay.
But we are requiring a public access easement to be constructed because you can't build a lot with no access to a road. And so it's, it's going to be a landscape feature so that when you're coming into the neighborhood, you're kind of dead-in into that. But it does offer three houses' access onto that private road. But that's not a public street, that's going to be a private driveway that allows three houses to connect to it. And one of the conditions requires that the maintenance and access to that has to be spelled out in the HOA docs, so we ensure that there's not any problems in the future with that.
And then, let's see, I know they didn't have a monument sign, but do we know the location of where they're proposing to put it?
Most likely, it'll be out along where Road C meets with Grange Hall in that, in the open space area.
On the southern side, I think.
Yeah, most likely in that corner area. But again, the condition says that it can't, in no way can it create a line of sight hazard.
Yeah. And then the connection to River Hills, I don't know, maybe this is better for the engineer to talk about, but I assume that's not feasible to build a road around the pond and connect there?
Correct.
Okay. And then last is just a comment to the applicant, I don't, I don't think, I'm going to, you know, condition it, but if you could put some landscaping along the first lot along Grange Hall, you know, there's great landscaping on the southern side, but just there's really nothing on the northern end, so just a comment. Yeah, yeah, so there's lots of landscaping on the southern portion, but not much on the, that Lot 1, so.
It's nice to be the last guy because someone else may have asked a lot of my questions, but Randy, for you, the rear yard setback, the minimum setback on the rear yards for the lots that abut existing single-family, is that 50 feet or 60?
Pull up the conditions. It'll be a 50-foot rear yard setback.
Okay. Would it be feasible to widen that no-grade zone from 25 feet, not to 50, but from like 25 feet to 35? It's fairly flat back in there where it, where it abuts the existing. I'm just, I'm trying to preserve as many of those trees. I know you all want to keep those trees if possible.
Let me pull up an area.
Is that actually feasible?
Let me pull up an area. There's a stormwater detention easement back there anyways, and I, I mean, I'll, that's more of an applicant question.
Okay.
So the ability to build in that area is limited.
Sure, understood.
Because the, when they constructed these ponds, there's a pipe that connects the pipe, or the pond in the park to these pipes, and so there's a pipe that goes in that area. And that's why those lots have a 25-foot front building setback instead of the 30-foot front building setback.
Yeah, I remember reading that, but.
But I would defer to that specific one to the applicant.
Okay, well, I'll catch you in a minute, because I've got a couple other things for Randy.
Sure.
The, I'll get my notes here. I know there is a point, at least with a condominium, there's a point where the HOA takes over from the builder during construction before everything is built out. Is that, is that true with, with single-family development like this?
Well, it really depends, it's, it's on a case-by-case basis, it's how the HOA docs are set up. Usually, you know, I would defer to the builder on how they plan on setting that one up.
But, but the point, the point I'm making is that there's not going to be a time when nobody takes responsibility between the time the, the builder starts building and the time that the HOA, the owner HOA takes over.
There will be no lag time.
Okay, okay.
Or, or it will overlap.
I, I know everyone is concerned with, with the operation of the ponds because they not only affect this plat, but they affect the, the plats that they were built to, to help.
Very important ponds to the city.
Absolutely. Do those two ponds connect? Are there pipe, pipes that connect the two ponds?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Kind of thought there was.
There's a bridge, there was a bridge built during the construction. You can see the, the guardrails on most of the bridge, for lack of a better term.
And just as an aside, I was smiling when Randy was talking about cutting through. I live in the, in Apple Valley East, and Newton Drive was stubbed out from 1954 until 2021. And we have, at the time, had over 300 houses in our plat with one outlet. And it made me nervous the whole time because all it took was a storm dropping a tree at Newton and North Fairfield, and we were trapped. And when, when my neighbors were all augured about the new, what's the plat there?
Cedar Brook.
Cedar Brook, yes, Cedar Brook Farms, when that was built, "Oh, they're going to be short-cutting through our plat." Uh-uh, we're short-cutting through the new plat so we can get out on Shaker Town Road and turn left on North Fairfield at a traffic light. My, my record so far is waiting for 46 cars to go by before I could turn out onto North Fairfield. So I understand you're going to get more, some more traffic through your plat, but it's going to work, it's going to work out. We did a traffic study in our plat, and the street I live on actually had more traffic on it than Newton. Gentlemen, there are a couple of things that, that I would kind of like to see on this. Well, first of all, let me ask the, the developer, I asked him a question, then give, then didn't give him a chance to answer it. Would, would that give you a lot of heartburn to move that, that no-grade zone, particularly where the trees are now?
To try to preserve as many of those as possible.
Yeah, and I understand the intent, and respectfully, I'll, I'll add this, we, we want a buffer zone as much as the other, the adjacent neighborhoods do. We also need to address catching stormwater before it leaves the site. So we want to get that, those catch basins relatively close to the property line.
Understood.
And with a no-grade zone, it's tough to get water out of that grade zone to the catch basins. So I'm going to say, we would like to keep it at 25 feet, but I can, I can make this commitment, is where there is a, because we'll, we'll take down any dead, dying, or diseased trees, but we will embellish that buffer because we do want that. trees. But we will embellish that buffer because we do want that buffer as well. Those trees will be on a homeowner's lot, so they will own and maintain those trees. Where it's on common area open space, it will be owned and maintained by the Homeowners Association. And reading through the conditions, there is a condition, I think it's within 90 days if one dies or something like that. So the buffer will be there. The intent of the no-grade zone really is to kind of maintain that buffer, and we will respect that. We will probably end up embellishing a lot of areas where there are thinner trees.
That, well, I wanted your input on that because I don't want to stick you with something that would make things essentially impossible.
Right, right.
Or extremely difficult.
Understood. And we do, first and foremost, we want to make sure we get the water to our ponds, understanding that it's a pretty sensitive area with regards to flooding and stormwater.
Got it.
And then, Mr. Meyer, to address your comment on the landscaping for the side of Lot Number 1, 100% absolutely. That most likely will be our model home. So yes, we're going to take care of that. And I did ask, and I forgot to introduce, our engineer is also here, but I asked Rich, our engineer from MSP, to really kind of hit the backs of that cul-de-sac with landscaping, oversight that I didn't hit that side of it. And if we did an entry sign, which we most likely will, it would be on the south side of that entrance.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks a lot. Gentlemen, a couple of things that since I can't add them out, I will ask you to. And one of them is, and one of the folks here alluded to this, and he must have been reading my mind, because I would like to see a bike path and/or sidewalk connecting the stub end of River Hill around the end of the pond and through, there seem to be several easements between that row of lots that front the pond or that back up to the pond. If you put the drawing up, yeah, those green stripes, go back a bit, there. I would like to see a bike path to go around the end of River Hill to connect the two, so that that plat connects to the new plat, and the kids in one plat don't have to go out onto Grange Hall Road to visit their friends. It just, it makes sense to do that. And I'd kind of like to see that as another condition. My other concern here is the lots 7 through 23, which are the ones that abut the larger of the two ponds, and a couple of the lots further east, lots 90 through 92 and 105 to 109, they all seem to have a 60-foot width, and that seems narrow to me. I would kind of like to see that up to maybe 70 or 75 feet. Given the size of the, particularly the one-story houses, they're going to be awfully crowded in a 60-foot wide lot.
Just wanted to point out that, just a point of order, is that in our PUD regulations, there is a prescription for a minimum lot width of 60 feet. So.
Okay.
60 wasn't based on just.
Right, I understand. I understand. I just like the idea of something a little bit wider. But that's up to Planning Commission to do that. But I would like to see.
Would that not affect the count?
Yes, it would. They would probably lose a couple of lots widening those. Took it up 10 feet, that would mean every, that would mean every sixth lot would, along that stretch, would be eliminated to take it up to 70 feet. But I'll leave that up to you all if you want to put that in. But I really would like to see either a sidewalk or a bike path go around the north side of that pond and maybe connect down to the street at that first easement between, I can't read the lot numbers, between the, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Can you all do that?
Yes. First of all, those green stripes, most of them, those are stormwater easements. That's for the stormwater.
Okay.
But that, the one between, I think it's Lot 7 and 8, I think, the ones on the left-hand side of the pond, we can accommodate, as long as we're allowed to put a path over the storm sewer easement to make that connection, we can accommodate that.
Okay. We've done that in other plats before, so I don't think staff or engineers will have any problem with that.
Yeah, and it's amenity. We would.
In fact, you could probably put a walkway all the way around the pond. It would be a nice amenity.
Let me, let me.
Hey, guys all pushed.
But if I may address the lot size that you brought up.
Okay.
On the north section, which is Section 2, where we are required to do the larger lots, where we abut adjacent ones. And one of the gentlemen from the audience, who owns that five acre, was wondering why there were seven lots on his. We're allowed to do 60-foot wide lots up there. We chose to do 80-foot wides up there because we think that section's kind of a little bit special. And so we do offer varying lot sizes. Number one, it allows us to do different products. It allows us to add, you know, third-car garages on some of our product, and also keeps an affordability factor. As we all know, housing's insane as far as pricing goes. And so we're just like everybody else. We just want to provide a good place for people to live. And so while I have this opportunity, I did want to encourage the residents nearby, I'm going to rattle off my email address and my phone number. They are more than happy, or I'm more than happy to speak with them after or outside this meeting as we go through this process. But the email address is my first initial last name, J L I P N O S at rockfordhomes.com. And so I just didn't bring enough business cards with me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, any second helpings here?
I have one, if I could.
Okay.
Just a quick comment, just to reinforce the importance of the input that we get from all of you and yet the sometimes legal input from our city attorney, Mr. Lowensberry here. The school issue and the school crowding and where people all have their kids in the schools, and that's a very serious issue. It's an issue that was involved in the voting we had for the new high school back in November. It's going on now with the property tax discussions in Columbus. It's something we're all part of and aware of. And when I listen to Ms. Allen and Ms. Curtis and others, very real points. But that's not here at the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is on development and property, and it's a lane that the City of Beaver Creek, the City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission can advise the council on. That's a school issue. Beaver Creek School District, as you know, includes Beaver Creek Township and other areas. It's not a lane that we can legally travel in. As much as we are empathetic and concerned, it's just not something that we have any purview here. So thank you for all your justified comments on the school crowding, that this development, all of the developments prior that we've approved, all the developments that would come after this and come before this Planning Commission. But school crowding is a very real, but not an issue in this lane of the Planning Commission, the City of Beaver Creek. It's a school district issue. And that's, as Mr. Lowensberry said earlier, that's where you look at your levies and your voting, as we did last November, and will possibly in future elections. That's where you take that up with the school district, not here in the Planning Commission, as important as it is. So thank you for giving that input, even if we could not act on it.
Thank you. Second helpings? Okay, gentlemen, first of all, I would like to add a 35th condition about that bike path.
Yeah, so I was working on some wording. Let me know if this works. A walking path shall be constructed from River Hills to Road B, connecting between Lots 8 and 9.
Probably better question, does that work for the city practically? Not a legal question, but a.
Fair enough.
Design one. It sounded good to me.
Yeah, I mean, if we could keep it a little more vague, just say, a walking path shall be constructed between the residential property to the, you could say the stub of River Hills.
From River Hills.
To the new neighborhood. That way.
That gives them some wiggle room.
If we need, yeah, because if you make it too specific and we can't accommodate, then it's just.
And they may want to take it all the way around the pond.
That would be problematic.
Okay. Okay, I have a 35th.
And I second that.
I have a second. And let's be, let's read the role on that. This is the 35th condition.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody want to change the lot size?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve PUD 25-4, SSP Number 1, with the 35 conditions as amended.
Okay.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Shall we read the role on that, please, ma'am?
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries 3-0. It will go on to City Council, both the zoning and the SSP. So you will have, you'll have a second helping with City Council on this.
And just to point out, those being public hearings, whoever got a letter in the mail for this meeting, they'll also get another letter in the mail for when City Council will hear the rezoning and site plan. I anticipate it to be that second meeting in August as of now.
Okay.
As of August 25th, I believe, is my anticipated date for this to be held at Council.
Okay, so watch your mailbox, folks. And thank you so much for your input. Really, we appreciate it, and I hope you understand what, how we have to function. But you get a second helping on this with City Council, so thanks for coming. And we're going to take a break for just a moment. Hey, folks, we'd like to, we'd like to get our meeting started back again, please. If you all would take your conversations outside, please. Thank you. We still have another case to consider tonight. Okay, we are back, we are back in session, and we have one more item to look at tonight. And that is, it's a public hearing for AutoZone.
This is case number PC 25-6. It's an AZRA detailed site plan on an application filed by AutoZone Development LLC, 123 South Front Street, Memphis, Tennessee, 38103. The applicant requests an administrative site plan in approval, an AZRA, for 0.825 acres of land to construct a 6,000. of land to construct a 6,816 square foot AutoZone retail store. This project would result in the demolition of existing building on the property. The property is located at 3198 Dayton Zine Road, further described as Book Five, Page Six, Parcel 186, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. I presume there's someone here from...
Yeah, so we do have a representative from AutoZone here. They're foregoing that presentation.
Okay.
I'll just kind of take over.
Okay, fine. Have at it.
Yep, absolutely. So, yeah, shifting gears here. Obviously, we went through a residential case previously, so we're shifting gears to commercial here. As Melissa outlined, we're looking at 3198 Dayton Zine Road for the construction of a 6,816 square foot AutoZone located on 8.825 acres. Just getting our bearings here, we're on the left star to the left there and then the Dayton lots on the right star there, Dayton Zine Road, as well as kind of the corner of Dayton Zine and Road and Beck Drive, I believe. That's just a current aerial of what was previously there, which was a, I believe it was a tire, tire choice was the previous, previous tenant resident there. So, those existing conditions, that building was 4,355 square feet. They are out of business. They also had an existing parking area. That building will be demolished in entirety and the, what they're proposing, the, is a retail, retail vehicle parts store, which we would categorize as the tire choice as well. So the AutoZone falls under the same kind of use category, which is a preferred use within the zoning district. The request is compatible with the existing zoning. Just getting our bearings of the surroundings, to the east, we have the Donato's Pizza. To the south is the Kroger Development. To the, directly to the west is the American Legion Post and to the north is the Four Oaks Early Intervention, as well as the Dayspring Ministries. That is our first look at the site plan. Really is similar to, similar location to where the previously, previous building existed. It's just obviously a slightly, slightly larger with, with two access points on, on to Road and Beck Drive there. There's no, no access on Dayton Zine. Here's our first look at the architecturals. The, it's a single-story building, stands 21 feet, four inches tall, as a modern aesthetic. We kind of implemented a little more stricter brick facade and surrounding buildings than what was originally proposed, so we're happy with what they've, what they proposed here. It's a combination of sand dune thin brick veneer, as well as mountain ledge stone, stone veneer. The primary entrance will be from the east, from Road and Beck Drive. It's a glass storefront. All four elevations will be of the same kind of brick veneer material and there'll be limited windows and doors on the, on the side and rear facades. That's a look at all of the facades. Once again, that, that top left is the, the front elevation there from, from the east and then to the, working your way to the right, that's the, the rear facade. That's kind of what American Legion would be looking into. And then bottom right is to the north and bottom southwest corner there would be what you see from Dayton Zine. Once again, the building is 6,816 square feet. Zoning code requirement is one space per 250 square feet. They have provided 31 spaces when the minimum requires 28, so they exceed that requirement. We're comfortable with that proposal, as well as they are implementing a loading space for their inventory coming off the north side and the dimensions that they're proposing for this meet our zoning standards, so we're definitely okay with that. Landscape, meet all of our minimum standards. We're happy with what's being proposed and they're, they're amendable to having some small bushes around kind of the, the base of the, of the structure, so we were, we were happy with that, as well as utilizing some existing trees and implementing some others as well. Signage will mirror what we'll find in a B3 zoning district. The wall signage that's outlined in that is 1.5 square feet per linear foot of building frontage and the ground sign, they plan on exist, utilizing the existing ground sign, but that ground sign will be refaced and match the, the building materials used there. So for this case, we are recommending approval, subject to the 13 conditions I've outlined in your resolution. Obviously, the applicant and myself can answer any questions that the board has. Mike, I did look it up, that store that closed on South Fairfield, or North Fairfield was an Advanced Auto Parts, so that was the, the store.
Thank you. Our, once again, our usual excellent staff report. As this is a public hearing, I would look at the empty, the empty audience and say, everybody has left, so did we get any written input?
No, we did not.
No written input, no public to hear, so if you would like to...
Just briefly, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Chris Peters. I'm with MDM Surveyors and Engineers here on behalf of the applicant AutoZone. Your staff's been fantastic through this whole process. We've been working with them for a couple of months now to get the store presentation where the city wants it to be. We think it fits very well on the lot. We're going to keep the existing driveways. Seems like a pretty straightforward development. From my position as the engineer of record, I'm here for any questions that you may have, but less is more, so I'll stop there.
Excellent, thank you. So I will officially close the public hearing and I'll turn to my right. Any questions?
No questions.
I have a couple for Mr. Peters. The roof of the, so I've been to the existing building, but I'm assuming there will or will not be roof-mounted equipment?
Yes, sir, there will be rooftop units and the wall...
Did I miss it?
It is our intent that the walls mask those.
Okay.
So they are appropriately screwed.
My fault, just missed it. That was the question.
Number three. Talking about parapet walls.
There we go. Okay, thank you. That was, and then I have one question for Colin, if I could. Thank you, Mr. Peters. So on the condition 13 and the ground sign...
Yeah.
Since the building is not directly accessible from the street, as many of the businesses are, is the ground sign that's going to be allowed per condition 13 something that will be placed significantly close to Dayton Zine or will it be back closer to the building that we're permitting?
So, so there is an existing ground sign there, so at a previous location. It's hard to see on kind of the, maybe it can show in one of these overlooks here. So if you see that southwest corner of the lot next to those parking spaces, a little to the...
I can see, I can see your arrow, yeah.
A little to the left, Randy.
Other left.
Southwest corner.
Okay.
Yes, exactly, right there.
All right.
That is an existing ground sign and they plan on utilizing that same, same area.
Okay.
So it'll be refaced.
That was my question, as opposed to, as Jonathan pointed out, the southeast corner...
Right.
Where it could be a new ground sign...
Sure.
Thus obstructing blockage to traffic going in and out of that street.
Yeah.
And that's exactly, I just wanted to make sure.
And if they...
We're not giving them permission to go in that other corner.
Exactly. We wouldn't, and if they were to propose that, we would get with our engineering team and do a line of site analysis on that.
Exactly. You said it better than I did. Okay. That was my only question, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. When, when that was built, that's why we put the sign in that corner.
History you referred to.
Yeah, something like that. I will, really have no, no questions, but I presume the square footage of the, of both wall signs meets the requirements.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I will say for the, both for staff and for the developer, that's the nicest-looking AutoZone I've seen. It really looks good. And I don't have any other questions, so I want a motion, gentlemen. I would like a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I propose that we approve the PC 25-6 ASRA for AutoZone, a site plan review.
With the attached 13...
With the attached 13 conditions, thank you.
Mr. Chad, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Would you be so good as to read the...
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries three zero and we are looking forward to welcome you, welcoming you all to Beaver Creek.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Thank you. Now, we still have to officially table the subdivision, the item six on our, on our agenda, so, gentlemen, I need a...
Are we tabling indefinitely or till next month? So just do indefinitely?
Must be indefinitely because in the past, we were tabling one month at a time.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Chad, move to table indefinitely, case S 25-5.
Okay.
A second.
I have a motion and a second and just for the record, let's read the roll.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries three zero and, gentlemen, we are fresh out of agenda items, so I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chad, move to adjourn?
I second that.
And we'll do that by general consensus and we are at 8:21. Thank you very much, gentlemen. See you next month.